And to develop which stands for one nation America. Now with the ones we have changes to the agenda. And then I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda. A motion from Andy, you have second? Second, I'll see your debate. Would you carry it? Consent agenda. You have your intention to admit that no better server will hold and shape. Oh, okay, yeah. I think there's a contract in terms of. Any questions? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So, on the motion, you have second?
Second.
I have second, I'll figure it out. Understood, this, okay, so here is I'm gonna have to call the. Not the Treasury Office, more like the. On the Treasury. The Treasury Office, um, there's a lot of different type of on PIS. Um, so all you need to do is you are protected what they want. There's a lot of on PIS. And other than that, offer a right to contact and keep the third party.
So why you put in the Treasury Office?
Okay, so we say one, are you not? So if you're able to come and speak, they are. Positioning for creation of first. Okay, time for release, um, Brad has talked to Karen and he wants to establish a contact. We may get two orders and he can and he can't go in a third. And that should be on strength and the least justification. How do we write the then on the next? Um, the next one is resolution twenty twenty five thousand fourteen. Um, the one that you have emailed to you, we can discover that. On line four of a patient, it should say a safer direct to public. Resolution in the official newspaper or on the official to the website and part of my law. So I'm going to ask that the council approves. The one that is here and not the one that you have developed. Um, with the only change being. The official newspaper from the official to the website. So this will increase the super rate one percent because we do not have a complete with the actual. Now, it says it's one percent to help the operational cost. And so I'm asking for motion to approve this resolution number twenty five thousand fourteen.
Maybe motion passed, I will see the twenty twenty five.
Motion, you have second, you have second? Second. On second, I'll figure. Okay, Brad, um, the information on the industrial revenue bonds. Um, Brad has a contact with. Carl and his return base cost. And because they have to be withheld at the property. They're going to be asking for extension to the dollar in the next year. Company into Brad's home to help out this information.
Resolution, you said what?
Temporary bond.
Is not on.
No, okay.
Um, on the, uh, the resolution that you will see. This was prepared by line counsel a couple of weeks ago, who made contact with me. Um, I just was requiring, his initial concern was that it had all been approved and worked through. But the temporary motion had converted to bonds. And there's a one year timeframe on several things that would require an cert. We were gonna be up to the S seven ending this year. Ultimately, once you realize that, um. That Stinger had not gone forward, that took away a lot of the agency. But the resolution which we passed a year, a year ago. Um, regarding the intent of the government, the issue of industrial revenue bonds. Also is basically a one year deadline. Stinger doesn't necessarily want to have to go through that whole process again. So what they're asking is to extend the earlier resolution. By additional twelve month period of time. This resolution that you will see ultimately will email out to you for. Act on December first, if you choose to approve it or not. Um, it is basically simply extending what was done a year ago. For an additional twelve month period of time, we're getting the opportunity to do that. Based on economic conditions and circumstances of the business, they didn't choose to go forward immediately. And all this time has passed, but they're still not giving up on the prospect of doing it. It's still a reasonable possibility, so they would like the opportunity to do that. And so that's really the short form version of it. Terms of the industrial revenue bonds for those who never developed before. Industrial revenue bond is not something that goes against the debt of the city. Doesn't count against cars like a Geo bond would. Certain other types of special bonds. This is past. We simply serve as a sponsor on this. Um, and yes, we are named and we have to be involved to the extent of approving it going forward. But they're an industrial enterprise and community. They have to generate certain revenue streams, um, in the way of employment, et cetera. That justify doing this. And we're the only one who has to approve it. Even though it involves both school district and economy in terms of the bonds, in terms of the monies. That are generated in those kinds of instances, we're still the only one who has to approve it. They're just gonna go, they go along with it because they're required to. Okay? Um, so it is not anything that exposes the city to any kind of liability. It doesn't put us in a position that if for some reason those bonds weren't paid or defaulted upon, we would have to pay anything. But it's entirely done by Stinger. Um, and then you default, default to them, not us. So this purpose is not under the tax, that means everything adds to this year. And be sure you understood it.
And so Andy, you said, yeah, it just goes through. If that's not, cannot against our.
Definitely not.
On either industrial or general obligation.
No.
So we were looking at some kind of bond near.
Not in any way counting against that. So our debt limit is completely unaffected by this. Also, this is just expressing your intent to issue them. The ability to still think twice about that, say something changes and say, yeah, we won't add. Eighteen jobs, only add four. And you said, well, it's not enough for us to justify doing this. You still have some ability to withdraw the support for this. But this is, was the first step in process.
I don't know, it's probably.
No. No. It's basically, um, when the industrial revenue bond, basically what we're doing. They're being paid back by the projected revenue stream. That will be generated by the expansion of the energy making application. Kind of minutes, right? Any other questions about it? Anyway, there's no action required tonight, I just wanted to hear you that heads up that this would be coming. Uh, you got this, uh. What week? And so I sent him to just distribute to you. Probably at least discuss it through pretty nicely, when it was you're looking at it. Did you know, do you have any other questions, let me know. I may have to explain those. I don't know, I assume Carl will probably be present. At the next meeting, you can answer your questions about it. I don't know about line counsel or not, particularly. I work with them enough on other cities that. I do these all the time as well, so I can usually answer it. But if you need them here, let me know. And I'll try to have either JP or Andy here. If there's something else comes up in terms of process.
So the next conference, you guys will have this topic.
And you should, I thought that, yeah, would like you to have it in advance, so you read through it and you have questions, let me know. But it's basically repeating what we did a year ago. Not quite a year ago, possibly a year ago.
Okay, so we are getting going now for this and others. Okay, number two on the business, uh, they have been brought into the city of Houston. And through people, through, through people in communities, some who don't through C League and some that do. That because of the shutdown, um, the league, which is reminded that when the whole early years of. Yeah, so, yeah, this is a program, so it is where people will get money. Yeah, we get money from the federal government to go towards water and gas. Because the government did shut down, the processing of the papers is, um, maybe it's. Um, in fact, I think the government, the first round of applications was maybe two days before the government shut down. Uh, so we have the petition, postponed shut offs and late fees for a certain amount of months. Um, knowing that really it would hinder. In the future, we'll get shut off in a lot of places because that too do, okay, it was not too available and. Then we're like very. So, um, after my question, it's how do we grab, I'm not sure if they passed resolutions to do that or what, what actually did to. Approve much their shut off, I was before, I think they had like about so much period. Um, but they passed it and I have talked to the courts, it would ease the financial burden of the city also to not be such a so many. Or is it out? It's a risk because they're going to create a way to hold them if you buy. But it's something that was asked me to be brought to counsel and then whatever questions Brad can give me next.
Um, in terms of the process, I definitely recommend a resolution. Um, you can, in a case like this, probably go ahead and do it by majority vote. And actually the council replaces it in this. I'm not crazy about that, but it's something that in essence involves the revenue stream for the city. Um, it does on the part of the explaining because this is a procedural element of what we do. From the city in terms of administering, uh, costs and billing those out. But I would love to do a resolution.
All right, or can I?
Yeah, you tell me how long you want to do this for. It's about the only thing I.
So the government's back over, I mean, what we can recommend as far as.
You know, it's hard to say in a case like that, I don't know how far, people who live really handy now. They qualify for certain programs. Uh, even a marginal or minimal interruption of those, um, revenue streams. Causes kind of a ripple effect for them. Um, where you and I might in a lot of cases say, well, that's something I can make up in the space of one month. A lot of people I talk to in these spaces, like, they're taking two or three months to catch that up. Um, and I, so I'm not saying, and I'm not recommending that. I think it's really more culturally what you feel you want to do. Given the next time, um, but I do know that in my experience with people that, um. There's an indication that she's only one cycle for them to catch up.
So Ken and I and Paul, I would say typically. The week, I mean, happened in summer between April and March, you know, so I don't know. So there's a few people that all have the long cycle that, um, get it over with their late fees, but then they catch up with their week. Um, and so we kind of added a lot of our heads and then we also took out the fact that in. April, May, and June, their gas bill is going to be at five, so that would be a time to catch up to. We had ballparked and thought if no shut offs were given, no shut offs and late fees were given. January through June, but all of those have to be followed by June. Because that would be too much of low gas fees, then it should not be too much of a. Issue, like that would be funny time to get leave in. Have a decreased amount of gas bill. And then all of those be paid before January first.
What person should people in town that we're talking about? Have people down or you don't know what you're talking about?
I don't know, but we actually. I have a full second challenge because I figured it for one and for two. And I'm correct about all that we can't choose for one and then.
For people wanting to do it for everybody?
Yeah, it, it's system is a, a large metal.
That was one of the lessons of percentage is because the privilege doing it for that. Um, for like our top people.
Right.
And. And just didn't want to have issues with the fees and that reason, so.
Well, I wouldn't, um, read off the situation, but we have changed insurance because there was some people wanting to be also affected by the funds. We want to just.
Shower.
So, yeah, so of course I don't know if you have much of that account, but that is. Not that. I just would be able to reach out to, um, Ken about how we can ask them that they thought about it. And they said that they repeat their mind. And to be honest with you, it's really silly for us to not keep a lot of shut offs to. Two people consistently and charge them the potential interest. Versus wait a month and just get everything at full.
So that's just kind of like water. I just don't want to see a country say, oh, they have a resolution on a thing from March and then not figure out solace and.
It would be, it would be the entire control. That they would pass shut off.
Yeah, I don't have a guess, I'm not explaining this gas wires to her all on the back. But I don't have a guess, I just do like it, so you know, it was one each other's bill or. You got a lot of water and a lot of gas.
So, yes, there's, yeah, there's, there's a respect for that, obviously, and I don't know you, honestly, I don't. Trying to protect me all, you think about that again, we want to do that with the gas room. And there's, um, I think, I think the, the scale of this is way more tall, but way more taller on the ground, but it's, um. It, it's not something we find a platform through, it's been brought up, I think, to look away from that.
So is this, uh, sort of, I don't know, this. We've, um, normally talk to the mayor, but the government, not the city, or this assistance separate?
The, the veteran government send the chat to the state, will they apply to the state? Oh, probably, yeah. To the state and the state. Hang on, I'm.
So. Or at least that can help with that patient or something like that.
So we put into that. More for your own, just that people go apply in the state, or we do this across the board generally? And when will we never lose a fly, I mean, because. I guess I don't know. What, I'm sure it's a little bit, yes, yes, and. I just feel like if you apply for leave and therefore we have this. Challenge and, you know, the state comes around at some point. There is some. Hope in that direction, whereas the other thing that just came out, so like. We had two years ago, we just not get the gas bills and you have to collect and. I don't know, we are, but it's all of that.
Can't. People are not sorry, you can't do it.
Well, anyway.
So, so, let that ask the dashboard, let, let.
I would be very, very, that's.
So Brad, we're.
Cleaner approach is probably to do. Instead of, uh, so kind of a no layoffs, a cutoff. Because the deadline that I said I should be touched on is really extensive. Uh, maybe you get people to hold up. I've got a billister's treatment anymore, so I'm not gonna pay the one I normally would pay. Um, cleaner approach, although it involves. Your time, um, is probably go ahead and continue to simulate a, this is an additional device on it in the case. If someone, for example, that are not receiving heat funds yet, or like some issue with the dark circumstances, they're not receiving. They're free to apply for, uh, some type of, of dispensation from the state. Uh, go together, delay payment, settle in place. Um, I don't know how many people that would be, I have no idea, I mean, you know, you know, you're in.
Are we? If we, I don't know. I mean, it's not a lot, I want to say, I mean.
I just want to see, if, if it turns into somewhere you're animating with those, that's not going to be a good answer either. But if it's a small number of people.
One day they'll be dead.
So that's manageable, you know, I've seen people provide information like this on Zola. And they won't be needing to do it across the board. So if you have someone else who wants to come and make that same kind of application. But they got a good, a good reason for you delaying.
I was gonna say, I think there's a way there are, you just having with the nasty bill and the shop one or whatever, just a couple of mutations, a file, a file or something that just says. If you're actively, if anything, if you're struggling for a reason, contact us and get some payment or something, I would give you just. Go with it that way where it's not the open door. I just want to keep my doors open till June and then, ah, crap, I'm three months behind, I'm gonna play catch, and they're coming, sharing themselves with the code, then you get next step. After two years, you're trying to pay it back, I still haven't. Um, but just say, hey, because of, due to, due to government shutdowns or whatever. That's the one that I used to get different.
I have a feeling that's how we know. Just due to the government shutdown. Because they may not, maybe people are just on, we may like somebody free that we don't remember it's salary, that's then.
Well, if I go, well, there's. But I mean, this process of, uh, the kind of decision made, uh, for me, we know what has, I, I just spoke when I said, you know, who that, or who, um, this one. Know what your stack, because it's going to affect our budget, it's going to affect our, uh, our service and, uh. Go with these, it's going to affect everything practically and we have to make that. So I accept the word, that's all, you've had an application and. Or if you don't block or you're trying to get that.
That's the hardest one. So we don't, we didn't, we didn't consider, put something, just anyone across the board, you know.
So it's like funny you brought up that says, okay, this is what you need for you to, Ken. So I don't believe it's like, yeah, just walk in, you can't ask them to make the decision, like, it's, it's clear cut, right? So she just looks at it, they have the proper documentation and it's clear cut, it's fine, if not, then.
Or you can do it, it's a process, you can do that personally, you can give her the important delegation. To make that determination on those two good parts, showing that this list of criteria being that. And if it's someone else that comes in, um, she can always say, you know, that's one you have to take through the council and off, would you want me? At the beginning of the agenda with permission of mayor. Um, and they can come in and see you as something that doesn't play, you know, it's sort of playground goal or something. But maybe you had a legitimate economic issue.
Yeah, I hate that part too, when people are looking at their staying.
Yeah, I agree, I get it, I don't, I hate that.
So knowing that, um, I, I like this because if they're happy, she's all agree. That they're significant and that their arguments are significant. And the only option I asked for them to kind of this is counsel and ask the grace. To make payments, not raise, I'm sorry, a payment, yeah. Um, knowing that, I'm just curious. If the council should take this idea, but not just make it to a government shutdown. So we can either, A, decide in the council office, C, C, because right now, the only thing that's happening, people are paying the bill for the big shut off. Where they come from the council. Um, that's the only thing that we have in progress.
Well, it's like the fact that things have to end, there's a time, I think, we have a. Couple of, three clerks, and it's a standard that they should be able to.
Probably most people would fall under the criteria. Right, because that's what we just, that's the whole stuff.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not speaking for the community, I have the idea of the first, not maybe the children, but like, um, you know, the first. Good thing, okay, first, you know, the name of the thing I talked about, yeah, I've been learning about people about. Like withdrawal or anything, or high bill, and I said, well, what, what would it look like, what could we, you know, what if there's a company that wants to win on that, so. So I went, what if they said in six months, this is how much it would be to pay off the water break, which you can put on their. Location, so they're not having interest. Um, so right now, it'll be in order that they do have.
Well, do you want, do you want along breaks or on their property or with the city?
It would, they got it fixed, but I can now, I just as a council. Let the clerk, um, have the grace to be able to make these six month payment plan. And if it needs something additional more than six months, then if we get involved.
You can, but I don't know, I don't understand it. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, if you put that, that homeless on them, and then if suddenly start looking at massive revenue stream. All breakers on the floor, suddenly it's, they, their hands on the top and bottom of that. Not what some cities have done, that is, uh, two members, which is not a problem. But the council to review those when they come in as well, so you list that part of the elected body of citizens put in place to make those decisions. But it's tax pay dollars, so you're messing with. So I don't know.
So is that a right policy or does that look like a resolution?
I suppose.
Or what?
Why can't Ken come in with the oddball ones into it, so that if they just have to come in, but they can't do it on that, she can't. No, I like you said earlier, there's competition. So, yeah, they, she, that's, it's, 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 it's.
Yeah.
It gets a lot of, yeah, I don't like all of that, you know, Ken, and then it's like, well, what, where are you going, Ken? Why are you doing this?
So now, the, the special, that's probably the thing about that. You're trying to see what's on the news.
So I go, yeah, the policy's great. But maybe I, when she comes to council, these are the ones that I have, we approve, they guess about, then she can. Let that report going, says to form non pollinators to review it, something that, well, that's a lot of pressure on you.
I do like the idea that Ken, right, because it's in my house.
Yes.
And we got, and there's a conflict in both. I mean, that, that doesn't. Call on sweep, you're not coming in and. So, 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 tell us if you live in the area that Ken, um, what, what, situation, like, they got, they got. So, but I told you, you're losing it.
Resolution, and I'm gonna go ahead and review that, just putting what you said. And it needs to follow a general criteria. You don't necessarily have to bring those to us, we will delegate that to you if you're comfortable. And that's circumstance, this is a rare, basically, that I can. Uh, but anything that creates any question. Or that she feels like it was, uh, got called, she's not stuck with, so to speak. Uh, the only reason that I have mentioned this to people is sometimes exercise, because it isn't waiting for two weeks to clean up for me. And also, uh, some people, I, I'd really rather go and advocate for myself, I don't want to tell it to you, and then I don't know what you're gonna say to the council. I'd have people come in and do that too, so. Yeah. I can make, give a nice flexibility to someone to get it to them, where it's a white or a watch first, probably for, for a grand, yeah, stop. And then they get here first, or deliver first. You know, they, because they're all paying us to be repaid. And then you show the way you're going for qualified individuals, for qualified individuals.
Okay, so I have two conversations from here though. I have the fact that we have people who are needed for, uh, something that's not the qualified, so I'm bothering you, I was just trying to. See if we can get one resolution or policy.
Some are done so far, but on the one resolution.
Well, but if you're ready to switch for the whole thing, if we just make it a better. Anybody having economic issues, whether it's because you're not getting your paycheck, it'll be catching the system. Whether it's because you're on line breaks or can't get the stuff, can't afford it.
All right, but when we're shutting down, finally, I'm going to be 20 together. Is what you're suggesting, it's something you, on number of water breaks and not a stop motion.
Right.
But this program needs to shut off, this resolution, not me specifically, but that you do is a smart.
I do, I have a, I have a, I have a.
It's like a set of resolutions for, you know, on a line break or, um, to that, and that's, that's a separate issue, if we, if that. Another resolution, you can do, or, or.
Okay, so for, so, so we can look at three resolutions to the next meeting for, due to government shutdown and that being temporary and. The idea was April one to six, so, yeah. Um, the payments we just had were on January and March, which can be April first.
Right, I mean, as far as applying for, you saw it. Right, I mean, as far as applying for, for, like, like, the application process, you know.
Oh, I would actually.
That's like, March first.
Why do you keep that, why, I, 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 I don't know, because of shutdown, I mean, we don't want the, 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 the.
So if rather than just with this first shutdown, then by March first, people should know that they're using, you know, if you, if you get your first and March first, they should know where.
Now, if they have the, why, case, it's, it's, you can use that nine, January, no, it's in the two year, for, for, so.
Okay, and then, for, so, they're adequate, to get a resolution that works somehow, where if you need a certain criteria, either Ken or the citizen can, can represent themselves at the council to see if they can plan to work, if that is.
Which one we have, that we're, we're.
Should they?
Should they, yes, not, not, some people, we got, we got, so.
The person, who we're talking about, the next meeting, everyone, for, for, in thought of, do you want?
If we have to be a fire alarm, for sure, the application of the, by, by, and then the stage pool by people.
Okay.
I might, we might get a comment, that's how we did it for, in March, or, or, yeah, so, yeah, so, I mean, the, the, the.
Also, those that end up with, um, you know, the latency, the asking, pay, for, like, the, there's a separate review that I use in different cities, where they have to sign that as well, and commit to having that done, so we have some kind of contractual paper trail, right, I'll bring that also.
Because that's something also, the question, question needs to get asked for us, and we're, I think.
And that's why I do it, is they want that to work on, but.
Thank you for all the questions, uh, the report on, yeah, um, how are you looking to?
Yes, I talked to the president, so today, we're waiting for the K M I T, we are waiting for one employee to turn their application in for that, to see if we qualify, um, she gave me the rates, and they are, um, they are better rates than what we get now, through the part of the show, so if you get into that program, she said they're very rich.
They're very rich, yes.
Yeah, and you have to be very healthy, so, I don't know, I don't, I mean, I don't know what made it, but, um, but we were still waiting for one of them, went to turn his application in, so, I think he got that done today, hopefully, and she said that it would no one would be, but our, through cross, we still, rates did not go up, but they actually went down a little bit, because she said we didn't have a whole lot of insurance, which I think was, so. Yes, yeah, our grant holder plan is, is very, it's a very good plan, um, I, I, but I think the K M I T is kind of in that same plan, like, if it doesn't, like, five hundred dollars, and, I mean, I think it's kind of like the plan we're on now, but the rate is cheaper, because there's more people and not fewer.
More, people.
Right.
Okay, so we should, I guess, maybe, you can, not, a little, you know, to you guys, um, I don't believe anyone's, and that, you know, she did, she said, and, and, K M I T, you're losing.
Yes.
Yeah, but she did say, there's, there's, the K M I T, or, or, it, it, and you can't skip, kick off K M I T, once you're in, or, there's no, it's just, you have to meet the first, question.
Oh, you put down.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all, you're very, it's going on.
Yeah. I mean, they, 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 she said, I know, or she, I didn't want to do the points, and then go, okay, you move this thing, that, or, that.
According to.
They created a duty, as I was.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, um, administrative, I do four plans, so maybe, I have two under administrative, one, in December fifteenth, at seven P M, there's not a water protection party here, all, all, and, and, another thought, this, this plan, as you guys had at four, and this big stuff, is, she had this next year opening about email billing, and her newsletter, and we have about that, some studies, she cut out, on across the meetings, have, help, let's be about this, and what we're hoping is to add A P, I'm not saying we're doing this today, I'm saying, I'm assuming if the society start adding A P to have mail, um, so, I'm not saying we're doing that, I just want people to have it in mind, that it needs to happen, um, also, the initiative, and we do have this wonderful email, but I do not have this much time on the people that they're still, you know.
Do we, or, 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 or?
Um, we've got, about, for me, twenty, I, yeah, staff, you, so.
Uh, we, from all that, I'm, I'm, say, if you have a count of mine, you know, for you, whatever, you're registered, and so, like, we're going, I'm starting, we're going to, it's, it's.
I know, I have time, it's, 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 well, for you, that person to get this email of, of, in writing, and, yeah, I just kind of, I don't know why I have my name.
It's awkward, but, then, then you open it up, it's, it's, yeah. Is there something that needs to be done for the council?
Um, no, they'll, I'll be.
All right. And, are we, do you need some?
Uh, yeah, refreshments, and.
This is.
Yeah, don't you usually do?
Oh, that. I don't know, record, yeah, so.
So.
Yeah, we tried to, yeah, so, yeah.
So on, on the bill, on the bill, is it just a bill, or? Doesn't have to bill all that pretty stuff, too?
I'm sorry.
Is it just a bill or all the pretty stuff, too, when you get to, you know?
So, we have actually with the newsletter, where she's starting, we're, she's starting to expand the newsletter, um, to that site, she's starting to have these other, I'm scanning off the website, so it's all, which I've, I can, you know, we're actually, so, so we scan it off the website, but, I mean, I feel like I want to make some changes, but the more we get people on now, the less, so.
Yeah, it's not as, like, older generation, or something. I would just prefer the, the copies.
Sure, yeah, but anyway, that, maybe, would you want to go, you know? Go, you know?
And, and, and.
Call Patty.
Well, it's, it's, you're, it's, 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 you know.
For each, you know.
Considering, it, it, it's, it's, yeah, that is, that's.
Well, it's, it's not really, it's, okay, so, yeah, for, um, I don't think that. She's scanning the last survey, I, 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 I made, uh, a pool of seventy-two people this weekend, seventy-two people were, were, they're on surveys, and we have several online ones come in, and so, on Friday, did my account, I'm reading on Friday, um, super good.
So, any for doing all those, going back and forth, correct?
It was fun, I, I got to meet a lot of people, I learned that you have a lot, like, I need to come, with kids, and, 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 I know, I think they're super cool, um, enjoyed meeting all of them, um, got to meet their kids, it's good, it's, it's, it's a clear, one, over, one, never my guy, that's, in my, 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 um, what else did I learn? Oh, I learned that we have a net about a, a single people, and I even have, like, fifty, the, the surveys, or one person, so, and, and, most of them are over age, so.
Yeah, it's just the older population, yeah.
Yeah, so, that, it makes you think, you, you, absolutely, because, I mean, we have individuals on my wall, all the time, like, things, but really, you know, you have lots of them on, and, you know, and I think that's something, especially knowing that, so, that we have to make.
So, I'm, I'm.
Yeah. Um, and what else did I say, so, on survey, um, well, I'm ready to promote this, I'm not getting a lot of people, not, or, so, I was, I was, I was, and I was able to encourage them to watch the council meetings on YouTube, um, some of them already have been watching, so that was exciting, and, um, yeah, it was, I got a lot of, so, it was a little good. And Ken and I, like, exactly what we were doing in reverse, because we should have started with one of these spreadsheets before we had, like, six of them, so, yeah.
Yeah, what, I'm not.
Yeah, it went really well, uh, other than the C P, you check the rules twice, but it's, it's, so, guess we'll go with that, if you're gonna do a, on the survey, you might as well be ready for the, with some, so. Jacqueline, you want to? Nice to see you guys, good to see you, see you.
Okay. Same as always, at the beginning, and have the allocation funds, um, you guys, I can't still look at it, have any questions?
We did, Josh, did you get your question answered?
Sort of.
Oh, okay, perfect, perfect, I didn't, it was a moment, so, I, um, I didn't, I didn't have a question, I know that, you guys have a, 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 where, where, uh, where do you want to be, you know, the, 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 that, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Please, for, we have no, we have to go over there. We go safe.
Uh, okay, I think you had a whole lot this evening, uh, for y'all, and touch base with a question that, uh, Tanya had asked a little while back, uh, she was, if you remember, stop messing with that, um, she'd asked about, uh, what things looked like, uh, after we had, uh, brought Logan on, uh, back in April, um, so what I did is I went back and looked, that, we brought him on early after the first quarter of the year, uh, so I looked at the next two quarters afterwards, we've got two complete quarters afterwards, uh, what we're looking at is really a forty, forty-five percent increase in our council service, of that was, uh, um, for the, uh, second quarter of the year, and the third quarter of the year was a thirty-three, I'm sorry, a thirty-four and a thirty-six percent increase respectively, uh, in officer initiated contacts, that's, uh, traffic stops, uh, assistant contacts, uh, that sort of thing, so, pretty much what we expected, when you increase your department by thirty-three percent, the third.
Same with that part, if you're starting, the, 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 that was a part of that, yeah, uh, that had a little bit to do with it.
Stay fair.
Stay fair, of course, as always, so, we did have a, we did have an increase that was consistent with adding one more officer, so we were pretty, pretty close to, to what we needed, so that helped answer the question you had for me, for me here, over that, a little while back, so I was just kind of trying to, to line that out, um, over, of course, the two quarters, I didn't think one quarter was gonna be enough to give a solid answer, so, and then, uh, in January, I'll, I'll give the full report for, for everything for you, um, so, we'll wait till we get past, uh, the end of December, and then the first we do in January, I'll give you all twenty-five, uh, just, just full report, fancy little thing in my hand, you guys, uh, other than that, that was it, so, did I have, yes, ma'am?
While you're here.
For you.
You are, and, you, you can use the form at council and the city about Bob. Bob isn't white, I would, I would, so, that, you know.
Bob is a.
I, I, very foul, I, I, Bob, Bob, who, who.
Okay, uh.
Bob, he's lying about the highest, that, that, not the highest, the liar.
Uh, Bob the Goose.
Oh, he's hiding out, okay, he was lying behind my car.
Go over the house, you know, I'll, I'll. So, Bob, Bob the Goose, uh, Bob has his own Facebook page, apparently, from what I've seen, what, uh, the deal is with Bob, uh, I contacted wildlife and parks, I spoke with the, um, regional biologist for this area, uh, who also conferred with the state wildlife biologist, and they both had the same answer, uh, was, Bob is a migratory bird, um, please leave Bob alone, their suggestion to him was, uh, don't feed Bob, Bob, Bob needs to migrate with the rest of them, he needs to go on, uh, relocating, uh, geese have been a really huge challenge for Kansas, um, one of the, uh, anecdotes that you told me about, they had some geese in southeastern Kansas that they took to northwestern Kansas, tagged their leg with a little, little rein that they put on there, and, uh, they trapped the same geese back in southeastern Kansas five times, before they finally just gave up, uh, so it's hundreds of miles, geese are smart, uh, they go back to where they want to be, uh, one of the things they did, that did concern them, was, we have one now, um, come spring, sometime next year, there may be two, maybe more, if he decides some of his friends want to hang out with them, so, uh, if it does become a problem of trying to relocate geese, uh, if you've been around, uh, the river area in Wichita, that one, that will tell you, like, they're, they're inundated by it, and there's not a lot that they can do with it. You know, um, the short answer is no, the longer answer is, really, um, the problems that, that I hear about is, uh, somebody will get too close to them, they'll start chasing them off, these, well, they aren't, so.
Honestly, I love it, I think it's kind of fun, so, if you guys know, I've heard turkey in Wichita, that they really walks down, rock, really, that, you know, and, and, like, just walks aside, walks, walks, and, 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 now we got publicity that, uh, eastern Wichita, was a turkey that I, that, or, um, it, 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 people follow it, I think it's fun, so if we have a, a goose here, that, that doesn't say anything, it's, 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 on a big bill, and, 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 cities on.
Right.
Or, or, I, 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 so.
So, the whole story's short, is we really do want off, by way, because fifty-five per friend, they're going to email, that are going to make that, and they're just going to be working.
Yes.
Uh, so, don't feed Bob, watch my business.
Please don't mess with.
Great, like, even though it's in house stock, it just likes me, I want to fly a boat up over my car, um, flies, and I take it, and, and, I, 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 I just, like, attract me, and I, they go off.
Yeah, he did hang out at Halloween with us.
Yeah, so, they are, they are, they are, so, but, but we have, they fly away, I can make, when, when, we, really don't have, we're, we're.
They're in, with, with.
Yeah, 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 but, but, I, 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 yeah, we're, walked off, I tried to grab one, two, about, and, and, it was a good, by the way, um, but, uh, so far, it was just going, yeah.
Yes, that's, no, we're. Also, say this, because there was cotton, that could have been a whole field, the whole, and, and.
For cotton?
It was a bit of cotton, but I was, I considered it, Bob, the only thing I think about that is, I, I, and, I looked, and, like, there was a land, though, cotton.
And how many is for that?
No.
Oh, oh, okay, I, 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 okay, it's not, yeah, it's, it's, did you?
Our, our, it was, 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 yeah, I
, I, I, okay, basically, all our, our, just, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you guys for what you do, okay, sixty percent of the court, I failed, you remind me, I'm a part of the council, and, 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 I did talk with, I did talk with, um, I didn't like, ask, the council to make a motion to prove up to, it could not be a cost of much, it's, it's going to cost over a thousand dollars, up to three thousand dollars to buy the items needed to secure, you know, South Colorado coffee, which that now is officially in our hands, and we need to board the windows, and, and, the, and, at the same time, I don't think we have the equipment that can be second story, and, and, there's a lot.